Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 28th, 2025 Regular Monthly Board Meeting in order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Campbell, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votchak.
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Creason.
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Ms. Dyssard is not with us.
Dr. Lemoine.
Here.
Ms. Rodney.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item Number 2.1 is a Communications Update Super News, and we have Ms. Veltz with us this evening. Good evening.
Good evening, school board members. Okay, so in front of you, I have your Communications Update Packet for the month of October. Inside that packet, you'll see the press releases that I've pushed out for the month, and some stats for our website and social media, what they're looking at, what they're commenting on. You can kind of read through the little emojis to see how many people we've reached and interactions we've had. And then at the very end of that packet is a list of what you're going to be seeing on Super News for this month, which will feature, I think, Arlene Miro Elementary and Trist Middle School. So, without further ado, please enjoy October's Super News.
Can you believe it? This is Super News Episode 100. It all started back in August of 2016 when Super News was born with one simple goal: to share the amazing things happening in our schools and in our St. Bernard community.
From academics to academic games, from the thrill of athletics on the field to the magic of performing on stage, and every award, smile, and celebration in between, Super News has been there to capture it all. For nearly a decade, Penn TV has been proud to shine a spotlight on our students, teachers, and staff, showing what makes St. Bernard Parish truly super.
So sit back, celebrate, and get ready to continue the legacy, because this is Super News 100.
Hundred, 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 hun- Oh, hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Veltz.
And I'm Barry Lemoine, and welcome me back to Super News.
This isn't just any episode. It's our 100th episode of Super News.
That's right. For over 100 episodes, we've been shining the spotlight on all of the great things happening in our schools and community.
And we're kicking off this milestone show with some big news: the announcement of our Students of the Year. These outstanding students truly represent the best of our schools, showing excellence in academics, leadership, and character.
Each school selected their own Student of the Year, and those winners are now moving on to compete for district honors. A panel of community leaders will review portfolios and interview our students to help select our district winners in November.
Congratulations to all of our school's Students of the Year. You make St. Bernard Parish proud, and we'll meet our district winners, along with all of this year's honorees, in our December edition of Super News.
From honoring students to honoring principals and teachers, the celebration doesn't stop there. The St. Bernard Kiwanis Club recently recognized outstanding principals, teachers, and even a few Smith Elementary students, surprising them with Amazon Fire tablets.
These events are a wonderful way to show appreciation for the hard work and dedication that go into making our schools successful. Smiles, cheers, and even a few happy tears as Kiwanis members thanked educators for all that they do, both inside and outside the classroom.
It's another great example of our community coming together to celebrate the people who make a difference every day. Continuing the honors, school board president Dr. Catherine Lemoine was recently recognized with a proclamation after being named Woman of the Year by the St. Bernard Business and Professional Women's Club.
I want to give my sincere thanks also to the incredible St. Bernard Business Professional Women's Group, who do so much for our community, including providing scholarships for our amazing Chalmette High students for many, many, many years. And so, I'm so honored and touched, and again, really appreciate this from the bottom of my heart. Thank you so much.
She and Man of the Year Mike Gennart were also celebrated at a special event held at the Civic Center in Chalmette, surrounded by friends, colleagues, and community members. The evening was filled with speeches, applause, and plenty of well-deserved recognition for their leadership, dedication, and impact on our community. Congratulations to both Dr. Lemoine and Mike Gennart for inspiring us all and making St. Bernard Parish proud.
And now, let's head over to NP Trist Middle School and meet the Super News team there.
Hi, everyone. I'm Noah Waggon.
And I'm Tegan Williams. Welcome to Trist Middle, home of the Pirates. We've got plenty of exciting stories and highlights to share from our school today.
First up, eighth graders at NP Trist Middle School participated in a seminar led by Claire B. Poche from the New Orleans Children Advocacy Center, in partnership with New Orleans Children Hospital. She discussed healthy and unhealthy relationships, boundaries, friendships, communication, and online safety. Joining the session were Andrea Lichardi, Lieutenant Canepa, and Colonel Bostick from the St. Bernard Sheriff's Office, who offered guidance and engage with students throughout the discussion. We thank Ms. Poche and our St. Bernard Sheriff's Office team for sharing this important information with our students.
It's okay to make mistakes. What matters is how you fix that. We're gonna wanna apologize. I'm so sorry. I didn't realize that you didn't want a hug today. Thank you for telling me that the boundary is that you don't want hugs on Tuesdays, whatever. Respect those boundaries moving forward. I'll be sure to ask you if you want a hug, right? And then don't repeat that behavior.
Next, we're highlighting our new digital systems: the Smart Pass for Hall Passes and the Pirate School PVI-S Rewards Program. Both are designed to make school life smoother while also encouraging students to celebrate their achievements, positive behavior, and the little successes that make a big difference each day.
And I have to admit, I'm still figuring out the Smart Pass. At this rate, I might need a hall pass just to find my hall pass.
In other news, our football team kicked off their first home game against AJ with an incredible win. They're currently undefeated for the second year in a row, and its excitement is building with every game. It's amazing to see the energy, teamwork, and school spirit shining on the field.
And on the court, volleyball night at Trist, along with Andrew Jackson, brought students, staff, and families together for a fun, spirited evening, supporting our volleyball team. From cheering in the stands to celebrating every point, it was a night full of school pride, laughter, and memories our students and families won't forget.
From classrooms to the field and the gym, our school continues to shine. It's inspiring to see the dedication, talent, and teamwork of our students and staff.
And it reminds us all why Trist Middle is such a special place. Now back to you guys in the studio. Bye.
Nice job, Pirates. And now we'll go from the Pirates to the Flying Owls. Our Chalmette High School seniors celebrated a very special milestone: Ring Day.
Held on the field of Bobby Knuth Stadium, this ceremony is an important moment in our seniors' path toward graduation. The class ring is more than just jewelry. It's a symbol of pride, accomplishment, and unity for the class of 2026.
Families, friends, and faculty gathered to cheer as seniors received their rings, capturing smiles, excitement, and a few happy tears along the way.
Your incredible class stands as a living reminder of the resilience and strength of the people of St. Bernard. You are proof that from deep roots, new life and new hope may flourish. You are the next generation of innovators, problem solvers, and leaders, and our future is brighter because of you.
Congratulations to the class of 2026. Your accomplishments make the entire Chalmette High family proud.
And speaking of excitement on the field, Chalmette High School recently celebrated their homecoming game. It was an exciting evening packed with school spirit, cheering fans, and all of the energy you'd expect from a night like this. And a special congratulations to Jada Wilson, who was officially crowned Homecoming Queen.
From the pre-game festivities to the big game on the field, it was a night of fun, pride, and tradition, a reminder of what makes Chalmette High such a special place. Congratulations again to Jada, and here's to a fantastic homecoming season for all of our Owls.
Chalmette High's marching unit took the spotlight at the Battle of the Bluff, the BOTB. Our talented band of performers delivered an incredible field show showcasing their skill, precision, and school pride.
In case you forgot, the name of the band in Chalmette: C-E-A.
From amazing choreography to powerful music, the Owls truly wowed the crowd and showed off all of the hard work they've put into this season.
Congratulations to everyone involved. Your dedication, talent, and team spirit really shined at the BOTB.
And speaking of music, fourth graders across St. Bernard Parish recently got a special treat: blues in the schools. Hosted at Dockville Farm, students enjoyed lively performances by the Ponson Train Shakers and Bruce Sun Pie Barns, all thanks to the New Orleans Blues Society and the Miro Foundation. Each student even got an egg shaker, making the experience interactive and giving them a hands-on connection to the music.
Blues with a feeling, that's what I have today.
The program introduces students to the history and influence of blues, showing how it shaped so many modern genres. What a fun way to celebrate music and Louisiana's rich cultural heritage.
Some of our very own Chalmette High students were recently featured on Fox 8 News. They appeared on a segment of NOLA Now as the morning's student spotlight. Maya Dufresne and Lillian Lai talked about their recent recognition as National Merit semifinalists.
National Merit semifinalist comes from taking the PSAT, and we took it 10th grade as well, because our school allows some sophomore test takers to kind of get a feel of what's going to happen junior year, and we can see what areas need improvement and everything. So we took it our 11th grade year, and we actually got the same score, but different stuff in different areas, and it was high enough in our state.
These outstanding students also discussed their future college and career plans. Congratulations to these Owls for representing Chalmette High School with pride.
And now, let's fly on over to Arlene Miro and see what's buzzing there.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sanz Isacosta.
And I'm Sophia Lantry. Welcome to Arlene Miro Elementary, where there's always something fun happening.
First up, kindergarten signing day. This was the very first year we officially welcomed all our kindergarten students to the Miro family. Each new Miro B got to sign a special certificate and even received their very own spirit shirt. How cool is that?
Next, we had grandparents' night. Over 400 grandparents and family members joined us for a super fun evening of bingo prizes and exploring the Scholastic Book Fair. It was awesome seeing everyone having fun. And don't worry, no grandparents were caught sneaking an extra bingo card.
And on the court, our Pelicans friend came to visit. Coach Rob Dill Christ helped our third through fifth graders learn basketball skills, practice teamwork, and even play with the Pelicans team. What a fun way to stay active and learning moves.
And finally, we held our first-ever trunk-or-treat. Families and staff members decorated their trunks, handed out candy, and showed off their costumes. It was a super fun night for everyone.
From kindergarten milestones to basketball juice and Halloween fun, there's never been a dull moment at Arlene Miro. That's it for now. We'll see you next time. Bye.
Thanks, Gustavo and Sophia. You know, Miro Elementary, along with the rest of our schools, recently celebrated District-wide Red Ribbon Week. This year's theme was Be Your Own Hero: Be Drug-Free, focused on raising awareness about substance abuse, bullying, and the challenges that young people can face as they grow.
Students across the district took part in activities and lessons that highlighted the importance of making healthy choices and standing up for themselves and others. The week also included a special visit from a guest of the National Guard, who joined students in learning more about leadership, responsibility, and the power of saying no to drugs.
Red Ribbon Week is a great reminder that being your own hero means making smart, safe, and positive choices every day.
And finally, don't forget, CHS Live is presenting Sweet Surrender from November 6th through November 9th. This hilarious comedy takes the audience on a whirlwind journey of mistaken identities, romance, and laugh-out-loud situations that you won't want to miss.
For showtimes and ticket information, visit the CHS website or call 301-2600. Be sure to mark your calendars and come enjoy a night of fun and entertainment.
And that wraps up another exciting episode of Super News.
You know, from the very first broadcast back in August of 2016 till today, it's been an amazing journey highlighting all of the great things happening in our schools and our community. And a big thank you to all the students, teachers, staff, and families who let us share these incredible moments.
Here's to the next 100 episodes of Super News: Keep Learning, Achieving, and Making a Difference Every Day.
And we'll see you next time.
We'll.
She'll see you next time. And remember, stay curious, stay kind, and always celebrate the good happening around you. Thanks for tuning in today on this edition of Super News, where we always let
The Super News roll.
Happy anniversary, Super News.
That certainly deserves a round of applause. Congratulations to you and to Jack in the Back and the whole team for 100 incredible episodes of Super News, always spotlighting our great academics, athletics, extracurriculars. So, awesome job.
Happy to do it.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Veltz?
I was able to go to the Battle of the Bluff. I saw Chalmette. They did an awesome job, a really awesome job. The level of schools they were next to, they held their own. I was cheering for Chalmette even though I was out there for another school, so I kind of got frowns. But they did awesome. Like, if there was an award for the most enthusiastic band, they deserved it. They literally second lined off the field. And for a school in Chalmette to second line off the field when you had two major schools from New Orleans, I think that was a big deal. And they did get their props from other band directors. So, I was excited to see Chalmette as Southern University. So, to the Chalmette High band and the directors, you did an awesome job.
Agreed. Agreed. They work hard.
Yeah, they did really well.
Any other questions or comments from Ms. Veltz? Okay, thank you so much. Great job. Okay, Agenda Item Number 2.2 is Red Ribbon Week, and we have Mr. Charles Kassar with us this evening.
I think you've seen this lady once before.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. When thinking about how to start this, all of you have been around long enough to remember that incredible musical Fiddler on the Roof. And you know, that story had many, many pieces to it: the precariousness of life, and certainly the presence of substance in our world has created both medical achievement and some real catastrophes. And we are, in fact, those fiddlers on the roof that are attempting to help community and children figure out how to balance all of those things. On a daily basis, kids hear the glory and the presence of alcohol around them. You walk in Walmart, it's in the middle aisle. It is such a complicated journey for young people to discern what's right, how much is right, what's wrong. And so, we're all part of this fiddler-on-the-roof experience. Does that make sense? So there you go, tying the arts in whenever possible. And as fellow artists here, it's my privilege to share with you this particular theme this year, that being, you've got to be your own hero. Because at the end of the day, mama of an amazing middle school kid that you have, we can tell, we can teach, but at the end of the day, they've got to make the decision. And that's our push this year, and we have several parts Sarah and I have been working on to not just do one big push, but several pieces through the year. To the point, we've talked about, this is going to be our theme for the next two years as well, because it takes time for message media to really penetrate into a community. And at the end of the day, this is the message: you've got to become your own hero in deciding, I want to do sports, I want to do academics, I want to be a goofball, I want...whatever it is, a kid is going to be affirmed potentially in the decision-making that they're going to do. So, on that note, tying in our theme for the year, which Sarah has done an amazing job, that this will be our first next push to Red Ribbon Week, being the whole concept of developing strong roots. The things you're learning at school, the things you're seeing, either good or bad, in your community, to grow from those experiences to help you become this person, the hero that is going to make a difference. And we were very fortunate on last Thursday, tomorrow we'll be at Andrew Jackson, that one of the young men, who was a graduate of St. Bernard Middle School, came and spoke, without exaggeration, about 16 minutes, and held the entire student body and the teachers, right? Just in an amazing place. The young man had begun to use substances in middle school, and teachers began to see and worry. And as a junior, the young man has made a complete turnaround. And most importantly, he ended his conversation with everyone. He sat down on a stool and talked. He said, "I'm so nervous, I need to sit down." And he ended his conversation that the opportunity is yours to break the generational curses that so many families have: suffering, poverty, substance abuse, and it just continues from generation to generation. And I'm telling you, it was remarkable. It really was remarkable. And tomorrow, we're going to try to bring that same message to Andrew Jackson. So, strong roots, and hopefully, a better future as we move forward with young people, understanding that at the end of the day, it's their decision. And we end our rallies. Mr. Campbell? My educational mentor early on, you guys. I became Field Trip Charlie because of him. We talk about, with young people, they see caution tape everywhere. And we talk about, don't cross this line. This is the line you don't want to cross in the problem. This line is so good to see so often. It shimmers. It's got so much allure. At the end of the day, if you can go for the real goal, that of protecting yourself and having a vision for your own future, that's where the future really is. So, there you go, you guys. That's the story.
Well, Mr. Kassar, we want to thank you, as always, for coming and keeping us informed about not just Red Ribbon Week, but all that is done throughout the year that you and our wonderful educators do to inform our students about drug prevention. And as you said, it's something that's extremely pervasive, not just, you know, in our community, but across the state, across the nation. And so, it's imperative that we are educating our children and giving them opportunities to engage in things that are positive. So, thank you for your leadership. Thank you, Sarah, you know, for your work on this effort, and all the teachers for their work on this.
And thank you, Ms. Lemoine. You almost missed a very important point. On the elementary school level, the schools have, I think, are doing a wonderful job of making it fun. My four-year-old grandson, every day has been in a different costume because of carrying out the theme in some way. You know, that, and you guys, we're fools if we don't think messaging is the power of change. It really is. So, thank you, guys, so much.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Kassar? Thank you so much. Thank you for your leadership. Okay, Agenda Item Number 2.3 is the recognition of the receipt of the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, and ASBO, Association of School Business Officials, awards for excellence in financial reporting. And we have with us this evening, Mr. David Fernandez. Good evening.
Good evening. Again, our district has been notified that we were awarded the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for both, as Dr. Lemoine said, the Government Finance Officers Association and Association of School Business Officials International. So, group effort, this is based on our last year's financial statements, ending June 30th, 2024. So, it's a real group effort of the entire district, the business department, the school board, and everything. So, we're honored to receive this one more time.
And that certainly deserves a round of applause. Congratulations to you and your team, and thank you all for the incredible amount of work that you do, day in and day out, to make sure that everything is fiscally sound and in order. We appreciate you and your team so much, and all of the teachers and school personnel that make sure that they are in compliance with all of the rules and regulations that we need to keep. So, questions or comments from board members? Ms. Votchak?
Yeah. Again, I would just like to applaud David Fernandez and the very few people that we have in the department, in our business department, that works in this area. This is over 30 years that we have had this award consecutively for financial reporting from both ASBO and the GFOA. But more importantly, we have had no question costs, no audit exceptions for 30 years, and not even suggestions for improvement over internal controls in a management letter. And that's pretty much unheard of in public accounting. So I just want to, you know, applaud Mr. Fernandez, everyone who works on this, and really, also, our principals and our people out in the field, because they do realize, and we kind of horn in on the importance of the documentation that we need. And everybody needs things right away. I need this today. I need this in 15 minutes. And he works very hard to make sure that we're very responsive to the school people as well, while still maintaining what we need to do to get these types of audit reports, not all these awards from these organizations, for the reporting, as well as the exceptional audit reports that we do have. So with the multi, the millions and millions and millions of dollars that have run through the school system, especially, you know, after Katrina and the rebuilding years, to not have a question cost, or not even one audit exception, nothing, over all that period of time, is really quite an accomplishment, especially for a governmental body. So, people should have, people in the community should have, should know that we are good stewards of the public funds, and we're audited by just every agency you can possibly imagine. So.
Thank you, Ms. Votchak. Mr. Long, did you have a comment?
Well, Ms. Votchak answered one of my questions. I was wondering how many years it's been that we received this award, and it's great that, and congratulations to Mr. Fernandez and his staff on the job they're doing. And it comes at a good time. I mean, voters will be going to the polls soon to approve or disapprove of our millage. But thank you so much for the job you do, Mr. Fernandez. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Warner?
I just want to make a statement that this is a really big deal, and the public does know. Because when they come and ask me, this is what I hold up. It helps every one of us around us today is to know that for 30-something years now...
32 years.
32 years now, we haven't had one exception, one issue with our finances. That's, you know, and it goes beyond question when you can show them that you have two awards, and you get them for the past 30-something years. It's just remarkable. So, congratulations to you, Mr. Fernandez, and your staff, and the administration.
Any other board members? Again, please accept our sincere gratitude and congratulations to you and your team. Excellent work. Thank you. Okay, Agenda Item Number 3.1 is the approval to incorporate the report of the General Committee Meeting of October 14th, 2025 into the October 28th, 2025 Regular Monthly Meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. White. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes. Warner, 10-0.
Okay, thank you. Agenda Item Number 3.2 is the approval of Regular Monthly Meeting Minutes of September 23rd, 2025, as published on October 10th, 2025. We have a motion by Ms. Creason, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Any further questions or comments? Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes, 10-0.
Agenda Item Number 4.1 are personnel changes for October 2025, and we have Ms. Albers with us this evening.
Hi, good evening, board. In your folders, you will have the changes in the Personnel Department since our last board meeting. And again, I wanted just to draw your attention to that retirement that we had mentioned at our last meeting, but just so that everyone sees that again.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Albers, and again, we did acknowledge that at our last meeting, but we want to congratulate Ms. Kathy Tedesco on her retirement and thank her for her many years of service.
Thank you. And I did mention it at the last minute too, but Ms. Tedesco deserves another special mention. You know, we talked about getting this award for the last 32 years. She came and began working for us as a bookkeeper and my secretary in 1988, and is an integral part of achieving these recognitions, because she's been involved with the finances all of the years that she has been here, and she's absolutely excellent, and there are many, many supervisors of programs who are crying now that they hear that she's going to be retiring, because she's their go-to person for so much of the day-to-day operation. So, she's a wonderful person, wonderful woman, and has been a tremendous asset to our school system, and a very good friend as well, so congratulate her on her retirement.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from Ms. Albers? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 5.1 is the approval of requests for permission to solicit requests for proposals for telecommunications services. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Warner, seconded by Ms. Creason. We do have Mr. Fernandez with us this evening, we did discuss this at the previous meeting. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes, 10-0.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 5.2 is the approval of the request for permission to solicit requests for proposals for network equipment. And there was a recommendation by the committee. We have a motion by Ms. White, seconded by Ms. Rodney. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes, 10-0.
Agenda Item Number 6.1 is a motion to enter into executive session to discuss the St. Bernard Parish School Board versus the Board of Commissioners of the Port of New Orleans, 34th JDC, number 24-0892/D. Is there a motion to go into executive session? We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Long, seconded by Ms. Harris. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes, 10-0.
Okay, is there a motion to go back into regular session? Okay, there's a motion to go back into regular session by Ms. Harris, seconded by Mr. Campbell. All in favor, please cast your votes.
Motion passes, 10-0.
Okay, Agenda Item Number 7, items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda, and there is still time before the next meeting to do that. Okay, and that brings us to Agenda Item 8, Superintendent's Notes. Ms. Vechek?
Okay, you have the statement in front of you for the month of September, and also just wanted to mention that as we speak, the Shawmet High School, well, is having their Owl Expo tonight, and it, well, could be. Many of our kids, our future Owls, so they are attending, the staff is there. It's usually a very, very nice evening, so we wish them well. The Shawmet High Play, as was mentioned in the SuperNews, which is Sweet Surrender, will be November 6th through 9th at the Cultural Arts Center. The Chambers Women Professional Network is making a presentation to our high school students, our female students, the morning of November 6th, we look forward to that. We'll be participating in the Veterans Day Parade on Tuesday morning, November 11th. And just as a really, a little bit further, remember, we are going to the Lions Club, which is part of the employees of our school district, members of the Lions Club. We'll be hosting the Nutcracker Tea on Sunday, December 7th. It's the second time, it was very successful last year. It's gonna be a wonderful event this year, we have two sittings for that at 10:00 AM and 2:00 PM, and it's on our website for people to buy tickets for themselves and their children to our Nutcracker Tea. And just stay tuned, lot of things coming up during the holiday season with our students, with performances and such, so check with your schools and our website to see the events that we have planned.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments from Ms. Vechek? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved, we adjourned.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Harris. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned, thank you and good night.